I'd like to call to order the City Council, City of Jonesboro Regular Call Meeting called to order at six oh three. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am, Mayor Proctown Messick, Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Dixon, Councilmember Miller, Councilmember Lester, and Councilmember Alfred Dixon.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Pastor Lewis from First Baptist Church, Jonesboro.
Thank you for the privilege. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, as this gathering takes place this evening, we acknowledge whether it's a federal gathering, a national, state, or city gathering of people. Lord, there's a group making decisions. They live in the shadows of things in the past. Decisions that were made that were good and some not so much. Lord, they operate in a community of people who grieve some things that are no longer around and yet celebrate some new things that are coming. So we pray tonight as they meet and discuss and hear from the people behind us that they'll have wisdom, they'll have discernment, and Lord, they'll be on the same page doing great things for this community as they look ahead to the future. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. This time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Counsel, we have an agenda before us. We do have a few additions. Do you entertain any from the council first?
Ma'am?
Yes.
I would like us to discuss just the upcoming events, Juneteenth and the Fourth of July.
Okay, and I think we have those documents in regard to payments.
I'm sorry?
In regard to pay the the the.
On top of that, yes ma'am, the second thing is the county attorney.
Yes.
And then, um, Fourth of July.
Okay, perfect. Um, that would go up under new business. And that would be, let's do B, Juneteenth. And those are the ones actually I was gonna add. C, Fourth of July or July third.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Any more from over here? So Clerk, Madam Clerk, item B on the new business would be Juneteenth. Item C would be July third under new business. Yes.
Mayor, I would like to ask council to table item under old business, letter C.
That's a conditional approval. You wanna table that?
If I, if we may.
I don't think, I don't think we can table. For the laundromat?
Yes.
No, it's a hearing, so we can't table that.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Are we voting on that tonight?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk, I think you had addition.
Yes, I would like to add the IGA agreement.
I would like to add the IGA agreement for the election, municipal general election twenty twenty five. This was an item we visited back on January seventh. And the mayor and council requested an IGA aid for review. And we also have a cost benefit breakdown of the election that I attached with the IGA.
But that needs to be under new business or old business?
That would be old business because we discussed it in the past.
So that'd be number L. And we're getting some back feedback. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other additions, council? Uh, yes. Uh, no, because we're gonna have to postpone that because we haven't gotten through it Tyler yet. Yeah. So that's why we didn't add it. We may need to do a special call meeting, but we're still backlogged with Tyler and so. But do you want me to just add it so we can address it publicly?
Should, it should be discussed if you just for discussion.
Yeah. So let's add that H I K L M, Plant Moran. I don't think I have anything with me though, so. Oh, it is, okay. No, that would be under old business because we started the conversation last week.
Just for discussion, just to, to review.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. All right. Yes. All right. So council, there's agenda before us. Here are the said changes. Item E L added up under old business, and that's for our IGA for the upcoming election in November of two thousand twenty five. Then we'll add a discussion in regard to financial services through Plant Moran as letter F M, I'm sorry. Under new business, we've added two additional items, B for Juneteenth discussion, C for July third discussion. If there's no other changes to the agenda, I entertain a motion to accept the agenda with said changes.
May I make a motion to accept the agenda with said changes?
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, council. Counsel, I just have one mayor's presentation. He was not here at the last minute, but Mr. Hurd, if you would come forth, please. Mr. Hurd successfully completed the Carl Vincent Institute of Government Certified Public Manager Program on May twelfth, two thousand twenty five. If you go look at our social media posts, you'll find additional information, but that was a year's course he asked to take it. I think soon as he got here and I told him I would do it and he fulfilled all the requirements. And I think he said you learned a lot out of it. So we appreciate that again. That's the Certified Public Manager Program with Carl Vincent Institute of Government completed on May twelfth, two thousand twenty five. Thank you so much, Ma'am. At this time, we'll have some presentations. The first is a proclamation for Municipal Court Clerk Week. Do we have our assistant clerk here? Come forward, Ms. Haley. Oh, Miss First, I didn't see you back there. Come forward as well.
She's hiding.
This is our court administrator, Ms. Francis, and her assistant. June ninth, this week, actually through the thirteenth. That means I gotta find a way to celebrate you all. So it's a proclamation and recognition of Municipal Court Week, recognizing the great work that our municipal courts do and how they contribute to the role in municipal courts and preserving public policy as well as the quality of life in the city of Jonesboro. So therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Danya Elsart, a mayor of the City of Jonesboro and the City Council do hereby recognize the week of June ninth through the thirteenth, two thousand twenty five as Municipal Court Clerks Week in further appreciation of our court administrator, Laterial Francis, and deputy court clerk Haley Fan. All municipal court clerks for their vital services. Thank you all so much for everything that you all do.
Thank you.
We also, council, have a proclamation for a commitment in O C, the National League of Cities. They're having, where they're recognizing cities for their commitment to volunteerism. So we're gonna do a proclamation. There are other things that we'll have to do in the upcoming weeks so that we can get acknowledged at the National League of Cities National Conference, which will be in Utah this year in November. So it's a proclamation of our commitment to volunteering in the city of Jonesboro. As you all know, we constantly have volunteers throughout the city for cleanup, for our various. All of our boards consist of volunteers. Some of them are here today. So this is our commitment to volunteerism, and eventually we'll complete all the other requirements so that we can be acknowledged publicly at the National League of Cities in November. So it basically just says, whereas, we firmly believe that the values of compassion, empathy, and community support and the foundation of a united, harmonious society and fosters connections that transcend differences. And whereas, the strength and prosperity of our cities, towns, and villages are based in the selflessness of its residents to serve and uplift one another. And whereas, we acknowledge the profound impact that can be achieved when we extend a helping hand to our neighbors, especially those of diverse backgrounds and lifting them up and collectively working to improve lives. And whereas, we nurture a culture of giving within our city, emphasizing that volunteerism is not just a duty but a source of personal fulfillment and community strength. And as we work side by side with one another, we learn from each other. Mutual understanding, understanding increases, misconceptions can be corrected, and new friendships are built. Whereas, we urge all citizens to care for one another, volunteer, and engage in acts of service and kindness that contribute to our city's betterment and its inhabitants' well-being regardless of background or belief. And whereas, the city of Jonesboro has joined a growing list of supporters, including the president of the National League of Cities and hundreds of leaders to date, and making a commitment to volunteerism. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Dr. Danya Elsart, a mayor of the City of Jonesboro and the City Council commits to promoting volunteerism, leveraging JustServe.org to make it easier for residents to find and engage and volunteer opportunities, and will regularly acknowledge and celebrate the contribution of our volunteers. And witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Jonesboro, Georgia to be affixed this ninth day of June, two thousand twenty five. Thank you all so much. And you'll hear more about that. At this time, we'll have public comment. I'm gonna have Stella at two twenty Jonesboro Road. Is Stella here? Stella, do you wanna come forward? We also have a public hearing, so I don't know if you wanna speak during your public hearing for your item that's on the agenda. It's your preference. There are all the rules that y'all have to follow when you come to public comment, because I don't feel like we. Yes, you're divine. Go ahead.
I'm in, Ms. Francisco, my wife is Stella Choi. And the reason that we just, we have this, I guess, for a public hearing, we want to open a laundromat in, in the city, and that's our first business. And we'd like to, uh, to serve the community, provide service for it. And I, I don't know what to say anymore, but I mean, it's.
That's enough. You'll have some time during the public hearing, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stella. Carlos at one oh six Pine Circle. Okay, perfect. Antonio Lamar. Do a public hearing, okay. At this time, public comment would not be closed. Madam Clerk, you wanna call the public hearings, please? If not, you can also move that microphone if you think that's gonna give you some. Oh, is it still giving you? Testing. Okay.
A public hearing regarding conditional use permit application twenty five C U P zero zero three, submitted by Antonio Lamar and Trinica Lamar on behalf of the Church at Zion. This application is for a small assembly to hold Bible study sessions, self-help meetings, and workshops in the MX use zoning district. The property is located at nine five two Dixie Drive, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six. The property is known as parcel one three two zero nine A, A zero zero six, and is situated on point two eight acres of land. The building was constructed in nineteen sixty eight.
Is there anyone here to speak on that public comment, I mean, that public hearing?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I spoke last week. I wanted to kinda give a update of some things that, some questions that were asked last week and two things that, um, from additional that, from last, um, the meeting that we had last week. And one was the, um, the parking as far as in, um, Ms. Alalisa was going to get with the, um, the landlord and just verify the parking situation. And we were able to get her the correct information over, showing the lot. The landlord said that if we need additional parking, the rear is completely clear. So I sent her pictures over to verify, to verify that, um, on things that were said last week. And additionally, um, the tenant that was there has since moved to a, another location, and thus the fire extinguishers was taken from the building. So we have since then replaced those and got those, um, looked at, so. But beyond that, we are asking that you all please consider our application. And, you know, we have a, of course, like any, any other business, we have a lot of people that, um, that we would like to support in the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak for that particular public hearing? I'll consider that public hearing closed. Next?
Counsel to consider approval of conditional use permit application twenty five C U P zero zero four, submitted by Anthony Foltz. The application is for the, for Hard Knock Motorcycle Club to hold meetings in the C two highway commercial zoning district in the Gateway South. The property is located at two five five South Main Street, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six. The subject property is known as parcel zero six hundred one C, D zero zero three, and is situated on point three oh acres of land. The building was constructed in nineteen seventy eight.
Is there anyone here to speak on that public hearing? Come forward.
I was told to come up here and ask about, cause, let me reword it. The paperwork he received was saying it was a problem with the, um, the distance between the building and the road, the roadway. And he was telling me to ask you guys, how did it work as far as we were trying to rent the building? And wouldn't that be an owner, I mean, an owner's question as far as them owning the building? Cause we just trying to have a private gathering, meetings every second Sunday, and we just ride our bikes. It ain't, we not like them other clubs and all that other stuff that goes on. And me personally, I stay right down the street from the building. Now, everybody else, they in Clayton County and Rex around the area, but I stay right here. And that was pretty much what he asked me to come up here and speak for. He had to go to Illinois because his mother's passed.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Carlos Hodo.
Carlos.
Hodo, H O D O.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone here to speak to that public hearing? I'll now consider that public hearing closed. Thank you so much, Clerk. Next?
Counsel to consider approval of conditional use permit application twenty five C U P zero zero five, submitted by Stella Chio. This application is for a laundromat in the C one neighborhood commercial zoning district. The property is located at two two zero Jonesboro Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six. The subject property is known as parcel number one two zero four eight A, one zero zero nine A, and is situated on point four oh acres of land. The building was constructed in nineteen seventy four with approximately two thousand four hundred square feet of floor area.
Is there anyone here to speak on that public hearing?
Again, my name is Francisco and my wife Stella Choi. Well, we got this property and it used to be a dry cleaners. And we decided just to put a laundromat in there, but at last they just, we need a special permit for it. We didn't know how they work that thing, so this, we get into this, up to here to, uh, to get this one. And I hope you consider it this, this one, because we try to serve the community and keeps everything local here.
Thank you. And we'll vote a little later on today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else to speak on this particular public hearing? I'll now consider that public hearing closed.
A public hearing regarding alcohol beverage pouring license application number twenty five A L C zero zero three, to change the address from one one two North McDonald Street, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six to one oh six North McDonald Street, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six, to dispense beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The legal bit, I'm sorry, the legal business name is B Mari Events and Art Studio. Tamari Scott has requested to be the license representative.
Is there anyone here to speak on that public hearing? I'll now consider that public hearing closed.
Next item is letter E. A public hearing regarding alcohol beverage package license application number twenty five A L C zero zero four to dispense beer and wine at eight six six four Tara Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six. The legal business name is D H R I T I Investment LLC, doing business as Pit Stop Food Mart. Mike Kumar B Patel has requested to be the license representative.
Is anyone here to speak on that public hearing? Come forward.
Yeah, good afternoon. Good afternoon. Mr. Mike Patel is not able to attend the meeting because he's sick. He have some problem, just pain something. So he asked you to at least, at least give me the copy of the license to start selling the alcohol. It will be good for him.
Okay. If it's approved, we'll send it to him, it'll be sent to him.
So when you're going to send?
Well, we have to vote on it tonight.
Tonight, okay.
Again, then when we vote on it, Ms. Worthington, how long did it take you to process it once we vote on it? And if, whether it's approved or not. Either way, he'll get some information.
Information, okay. Thank you so much.
Not tonight.
Can I go?
If you can state your name for the record, please. Your first and last name.
You can just tell her. Or he wants you to read it.
Okay, his name is, let's see, A R I F U D D I N I N, last name Mohammed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Yes, you may go. Thank you, so welcome. Anyone else here for that public hearing? I'll now consider that public hearing closed. That concludes our public hearings for this evening.
Letter F, counsel to discuss Jonesboro housing authority.
No, no. So we got some approval of minutes.
Oh, wait a minute. I don't, wait. Go back to the first.
So now we'll move, council, there's three sets of minutes and we can approve them all separately. The first meeting is our special call meeting, emergency special call meeting on March sixth, two thousand twenty five. Quick short meeting. Am I in the right place? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Motion made by Mayor Proctown, second by Councilman Alfred Dixon. Any discussion, council? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much. Our next set is May fifth, our work session. There's a motion by Councilwoman Miller. Second by Alfred Dixon. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Last set is on May twelfth.
Second, that motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Miller, second by A. Dixon. Any discussion, council? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much. I do want to commend Ms. Drewett, Drewett for making sure that we stay current. Thank you so much. I do want to commend Ms. Drewett, Drewett for making sure that we stay current. So we have no backlog of minutes and that is her goal, that we don't, y'all don't have twenty sets of minutes. So thank you so much for working so hard on those. Next, we have a cons- con, um, consent agenda with three items. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to accept those, um, our, to approve our consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Alfred Dixon, second by Don Dixon. All, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. This time we'll move on to our old business. Want to call that item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Letter A, under old business, counsel to consider approval of conditional use permit application twenty-five CUP zero-zero-three submitted by Antonio Lamar and Trinikia Lamar on behalf of the Church at Zion. This application is for a small assembly to hold Bible study sessions, self-help meetings, and workshops in the MX Mixed Use Zoning District. The property is located at nine-five-two Dixie Drive, Jonesboro, Dixie Drive, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six. The property is known as parcel one-three-two-zero-nine-A, A-zero-zero-six and is situated on point-two-eight acres of land. The building was constructed in nineteen-sixty-eight.
Thank you, counsel. Before you, it's a recommendation of staff, Ms. Cameron, who's not with us tonight, for approval of registering a business license to operate a small assembly to serve the community at the, um, above-mentioned address. There, there are some conditions that need to be met as outlined. There's no further discussion. I'll entertain some type of motion regarding this.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the application for, um, number twenty-five CUP zero-zero-three with the conditions as outlined.
Thank you. Second by, um, Councilman Dee Dixon. Is there any further discussion, counsel? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much. Um, the next item?
Letter B. Counsel to consider approval of conditional use permit application twenty-five CUP zero-zero-four submitted by Anthony Foltz. The application is for Hard Knock Motorcycle Club to hold meetings in the C-two Highway Commercial Zoning District in the Gateway South. The property is located at two-five-five South Main Street, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six. The property is known as parcel zero-six-hundred-one-C-D-zero-zero-three and is situated on point-three-oh acres of land. The building was constructed in nineteen-seventy-eight.
Counsel, there's an application before you. The recommendation of staff is denial because the use is not in accordance with our Gateway South district plan. There's a motion on the floor to deny. Any discussion, counsel? Yes.
I, I'd like to discuss this. Is there, is there anybody else that has a plot to use this building at this time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So with them only wanting to use it once a month, I really, I really think we should consider that. It's better even if it's one time than being back at every single day. They get buildings, cause issues. That's just my thoughts.
Alright, so there's a. I don't, so, um, there's a motion on the floor.
Mayor, I'll just say, I, um, I appreciate Mayor Protem's, um, comments. And I appreciate Mr. Carlos coming up and speaking, um, during public comment about this matter here. Seeing he stays in the community, um, he's very familiar with it. Um, I think that's something that we should consider also.
So right now, there's a motion on the floor to deny. Um, if there's no further comment, I'll take a vote on that motion and determine where it goes from there. All in favor? All opposed? Councilman Powell, how did you vote?
For, for denied.
For the motion, okay. So the motion carries. I want to make sure I have it right. So motion carry, you have the vote for that?
Yes. Missick and Alfred, Councilmember Alfred Dixon.
And Mayor Sardar.
And, okay.
Voted nay?
Nay.
Okay, perfect. Alright, thank you all so much. Let's go to the next item.
Counsel to consider approval of conditional use permit application twenty-five CUP zero-zero-five submitted by Stella Chio. The application is for a laundromat in the C-one Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. The property is located at two-two-zero Jonesboro Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six. The subject property is known as parcel number one-two-zero-four-eight-A-one-zero-zero-nine-A and is situated on point-four-oh acres of land. The building was constructed in nineteen-seventy-four with approximately two-thousand-four-hundred square feet of floor area.
Counsel, recommendation from staff, Ms. Cameron, is approval. I don't believe there's any conditions listed on this one as well. I'll entertain a motion either way. There's a motion from Councilman Dee Dixon to approve.
Second.
Second by Billy Power. Is there any further discussion, counsel? Looking this way, no, I'm, I'm so, you left. Councilwoman Miller.
Um, I understand the, the request to approve. However, I just want to make sure that this meets what we want for the city of Jonesboro. We do have, um, a laundromat within the city. We have a few that are right outside of the city limits. And, um, I'm just unsure if this is exactly what we want. If it's going to garner the other businesses that we want to come around that area. Um, I know what it previously was, but that doesn't mean that we can't move to something maybe a little bit more progressive toward the future. So it's just a thought, um, just a thought. Those are my thoughts.
Um, Mayor Protem?
Uh, I, I was just going to confer exactly what Councilwoman Miller said, just to see if there was any other input about uses for the building and uses for the property. I have nothing against it, but I think they're definitely needed. But I wanted to be sure that, to, again, I'll ask the same question, to see if there's any other interest shown, um, in that property.
And so what?
One time there was a convenience store, but we haven't.
And I think what happens a lot of times, people may speak to the owner and we're not privy to those, you know, and if they can't make the rent or can't make the terms of what the owner decides, then we're not privy to, um, that. Is there any other discussion, counsel? So there's a motion on the floor to approve. All in favor? Any opposition? Any opposition? So it passes unanimously. One nay? Councilman, um, Alfred Dixon. Thank you so much. Next item?
Counsel to consider approval of alcohol beverage pouring license application twenty-five ALC zero-zero-three to change the address from one-one-two North McDonald Street, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six to one-oh-six North McDonald Street, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six to dispense beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The legal business name is B-Marii Events and Art Studio. Tamari Scott has requested to be the license representative.
And if you all recall from, um, last week, this is recommendation is for approval. And this is really just kind of cleaning up, um, and kind of getting the addresses to correspond with the alcohol permit that was listed at the subsequent address. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Yes.
Mayor, I just have one quick question. We were seeing a random at the beginning of the name. And the business in question, B-Marii Arts Studio, appears to be on the term of a new business.
For that address.
Is it, if that was going to be my question, is that just for that address?
Correct.
So it should be listed as a new business?
Um, well, it can't be listed as a new business until she goes through this process. Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much, counsel.
Letter E. Counsel to consider approval of alcohol beverage package license application twenty-five ALC zero-zero-four to dispense beer and wine at eight-six-six-four Tara Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six. The legal business name is D-H-R-I-T-I Investment LLC doing business as Pit Stop Food Mart. Mike Kumar B. Patel has requested to be the license representative.
Recommendation for this is approval. If, this is just a change of ownership to existing business that already, um, provides, um, that has a current license, but because it's a new owner, it has to be transferred. So they've, um, if you see that they, based on the fingerprinting and background, um, and everything, so recommendation of couns, I mean, recommendation of staff is for approval. Is there a motion on the floor? Can we entertain a motion? Motion by, um, Don Dixon, second, by Councilman Billy Pow, I mean, I'm sorry, Bobby Lester. I gotta, should have y'all names written right here. Is there any other discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir. Councilman Powell.
When you were reading the, uh, the thing then, didn't you say dispense?
It says pouring license on the board, but it's a package license application. And, um, dispense beer and wine?
This be total package.
Okay, so.
Just sell it to go home.
Okay.
Okay, and on the board it says pouring still too.
Hold on one second.
But it should be just changed to package license.
Okay, so we'll have to.
Wait, well, the title is correct. So, um, the, I think you just missed the wording. So if you look at the title, like the previous one was an alcohol beverage pouring license for a B-Marii. This one is, um, definitely an application for a beverage package license. So we just need to make sure that when we produce the minutes, that the hearing would reflect, not dispense, but, um, um, a actual beverage package license. Thank you, um, Councilman Lester. So this would be a motion to approve the alcohol beverage package license application. Are you all okay with that? It's been appropriately second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you so much. Um, at this time, you ready?
Letter F. Counsel to discuss Jonesboro Housing Authority Press Wick Company's request for funding commitment for an affordable multifamily development.
Alright, counsel, if you turn to the second page, third page, we discussed this before. Um, we, there, we're asking, or they're asking that we waive two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars in building permitting fees, um, and then allocating the additional up to two-fifty, um, to assist with paying for the building plan review in the EPD. I believe Mayor Protem wanted information. If you want to come up, Paul. Paul is the, um, executive director for the Jonesboro Housing Authority. And I think Mayor Protem wanting to know a commitment from, um, Clayton County. Were you able to get that information?
Yeah, we were at the work session last week and there was a question about, um, providing something from the Clayton County CBG office. I've been in contact with Ms. Boswell, um, and for something that would be on the record as far as minutes, she, she, she said she wanted to hold off on, on presenting something. We, I did apply back in January of twenty-twenty-five. We, we were awarded that. There's been some delays in that. Um, but, but she's as much assured us that we should be receiving it. Um, but until there's that final that it is received, she did not, she did not feel comfortable providing that. There again, we, we, we met everything. I mean, I was going back through my emails. Uh, we've had over fifteen to twenty emails correspondence with the, with this, with the city and the council members and had many good correspondence and questions, um, taking tours, um, and, and, and led those, um, and, and had council members being able to ask Press Wick at their properties and just really dig into, into why we chose Press Wick, why we think they would be great for, for this development. Um, and then all the many benefits that would just come along with us, um, doing this development. Um, they're just numerous and, and the biggest one really is the existing housing property that we have located that is literally just steps away from the downtown, being able to, to renovate that in the next stages. Um, that's something we're excited that this will, this will kind of be a catalyst to help, um, do that. Um, and then lastly, I will also say, um, we were approached, Jonesboro Housing Authority was approached by the city, um, back whenever, um, the, the, the Lytec development was being built here, very similar fashion, that we would basically contribute, um, on behalf of the city. So that way, the DCA award would hopefully get more points and basically look better for submittal. And that's what we're asking of y'all, just to basically kind of do that. We, we did that in good faith when we had no money, um, and we're just asking the city basically if they could do the same. Um, because we think this would be a big benefit to the city, as was Hurstone. Um, but we think, we think this will be a big, a big boost for the city. And then hopefully, what's to come, just, just, just even better.
Thank you so much. So again, counsel, um, I would personally ask that we approve up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, um, not to exceed, um, in fee waivers, um, for building permit fees. And again, this is not fees that we, this is not like we're losing money. We just make the money.
Well, and this money will be used to bake, basically help make amenities better.
But it's not, it's not a budget in cumbersome. Counsel, yeah, I mean, um, I'll entertain a motion. Um, there's a motion by Councilwoman Miller, pro, um, properly, appropriately second by Councilman Alfred Dixon. Any discussion, counsel? Mayor Protem?
So I appreciate you checking with us. Um, can you tell us what you said back in January you were awarded?
Well, that was, that was when I did the application. It was supposed to be last, last fall that they, that you went through. You had to be trained for the application process, which I went through their training. Um, but then because of various factors, I guess, they did that in January. I, I did the application and that's when we were awarded for that. So it was kind of after that November that we met with, with the, with the city council that, that y'all said, hey, can you reach out to Clayton County? And we did that very shortly thereafter. Um, and like I said, the, the, the application process was supposed to be in December of last year, but it got pushed back to January. Um, then, then sometime in February, I think we were notified that, that, that the application was chosen. But obviously there, the funds were going to, were being held right now because of other issues outside of their control.
I, I did a little research myself.
Sure.
It looks like you have one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-six housing voucher, uh, that you're responsible for.
Eighteen ninety-five.
Eighteen ninety-five.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going by your website. Eighteen ninety-five, that's a lot. Out of those eighteen ninety-five, I know that thirty units are here within the city of Jonesboro. How many other families within the city of, or one-point-nine miles? How many other families are you looking to relocate within the city of Jonesboro into this new project?
Well, I, I think the better question, what she's asking is, and, and you have to kind of understand the design of this whole project. And, and some of us do because we came to the various meetings. So other units, the hundred-and-eighty, because this is affordable, I'm not even sure some of those choice vouchers will be applicable for the units outside of the ones that we may move over. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so it, it's a hundred-and-ninety-six total units. And there'll be, um, forty project-based vouchers within those two-hundred units.
So out of a hundred-and-ninety-six units, only forty of those units will be used as housing authority units?
Well, choice voucher unit.
The choice voucher will be, will be attached to them, yes.
So the HUD Section eight, only forty?
Correct.
Will be attached? Out of one-thousand-eight-hundred, I'm sorry, one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-five people that you're, that you're overseeing at this point?
But those vouchers can stay anywhere in Clayton County, not just in Jonesboro.
We're, we're looking at this project, so, and how we can help benefit the people that are living in the city.
But what you would, what you would be doing is, is helping relocate constituents that are already in housing to this, this development by allowing for those vouchers to be tied to this, to this development. Then it makes it more easy for those constituents that you already have in Jonesboro to move from the, the High Tower or Wilburn Street into this development and not significantly increase their rents from their income base that they currently, I mean, several of them are elderly or disabled and have things, their, their own set SSIs and, and other things. Others have income and are working, so theirs would be percentage-based there as well. So, so you'd basically be providing the opportunity for these people. And, and I've, I've given numerous reasons as to the benefits. Whereas the, the developments on High Tower and Wilburn Street, we, we, we do not get enough funding to, to feasibly continue. I mean, basically, that's, those have been underfunded for a while as far as the needs that they have with the cost of inflation. And so they don't have dishwashers, they don't have state-of-the-art facilities, they don't have learning centers like a computer. They don't have, so basically, what you're doing is making your constituents have a better way of life and inter, integrating them with various levels of income. Instead of everyone to their left or right being the same income level as them, it gives them a leg up because there's going to be higher income levels in this community. So therefore, it would hopefully serve as kind of a. So, therefore, it would hopefully serve as kind of a blueprint of, hey, here's how you move towards self-sufficiency.
And I also want to add, um, Mayor Protem, your point is well-taken. But this project wasn't designed to be a hundred percent voucher-led property. That is not what the national trend is doing for housing. You're doing mixed income opportunities. So, in this one building, yes, we'll have our voucher, um, we'll have our, the forty voucher apartments, and I think it's also important to mention that those forty voucher apartments will look no different than anyone else that would be paying market rate. So, this is a vision to, to address the housing concern that we have nationally and how Jonesboro can contribute. We also spoke about, um, our officers would be able to stay, our employees would be able to stay here. So, if we're looking at it that in order for us to give us two hundred and fifty, that it has to be a hundred percent for constituents, you can never look, you can never look at that because our desire is to bring people into the city of Jonesboro. And I think having these properties available, it shows the interest to move here. So, I just want to be clear, like, the intent is never to have a one hundred percent housing voucher, um, project, am I correct? And I don't, I don't know anywhere in the country where they're creating new ones there, and I don't think Presswic, any of your properties have been that way. It's always a percentage, and the, and what is important to me is that we did have some available for affordable housing, which means that, um, you know, we open it up to the working class to have, um, which is the, the niche, um, in the housing market, in the housing concern, is that middle rental for affordable, for people like teachers, police officers, um, and, and most of our employees that make nineteen dollars an hour. So, I just kind of wanted to address that, that we would never want it to be a hundred percent voucher.
And that, and that's not, that's not the plan for this.
I do have some more questions.
Sure.
Okay, so with the, um, with that being said, absolutely, I understand that it's not a hundred percent voucher, but you, you did say that the residents that are here in the thirty units are going to have their choice, but not all of them will qualify. So, not all thirty of those.
Well, some of the ones in our current housing, they have, they have more, they basically have, have more family members than, than we have bedroom space in the new facility. Because the new facility will just be one, two, and three bedrooms. Anyone, basically, per HUD rules and regulations, you can't have more than two heartbeats per room. So, if a family has more than six, we cannot, we cannot put them into a unit that has, that's only three bedrooms.
So, you keep these units open over here while this facility, once this facility opens?
Well, hopefully, it'll be, we will, we'll have to apply, HUD would have to approve, but that is kind of the hopes, because there again, the, the, it will be kind of in place, so that way, there is a place for relocation. We will be allowed to use even our vouchers to help relocate the larger families, but, but, but that's a different discussion that we can have on another day. But, but we have, there are plans to help relocate the families, whether it's at this location or another, but we would be offering, basically, the vouchers to the, I mean, it'd be, be, I mean, the first ones would basically be the residents that are currently in housing, and then we would open that up to the community for those, for, for the number that would, that would fit that, because those would be tied to those units.
And I, I just wanted him to clarify while he's on it. So, clarify, we're, when this opens, we're not shutting down our current housing. So, just because this one, uh, opens doesn't mean we're forcing out that. The plan for redevelopment of that area is, is separate from this particular one. So, I, I think we've kind of gotten mixed up.
Right.
The ones that are living on those two streets now, they will have the option to move over here.
That is correct.
Then later on, we're talking about probably two or three years, when we getting ready to do our development, then, then we'll have to address those choices, those that want to, they would have to leave then.
At that point, but our, our hopes are that we would file, and, and, and basically, upon being successful, then we would have to start relocating. And, and if, if the timeline on this works, then we're, we're trying to make it where it'd be around the time that those would begin opening, so that way, it'd be a smooth transition.
But we're only.
For, for those, for only those families.
But we're only going to ask those that are existing there, so let's just say, Unit A that has five bedrooms. That person is going to be allowed to stay there until we come up with a development plan for that current property, am I correct?
Or we would, or we would, yes, I mean, it would.
I mean, there, there's a reason why we would move, if they decide they don't want to go to this one.
Right, we would be able to relocate them with, with housing choice vouchers as well. But that would be, the only way that we're able to relocate them is if HUD said, hey, y'all can demolish this and build new here. It's not like we're going to move people out and there's going to be vacant buildings standing around.
The plan to move anyone that wants to stay there has not been initiated.
Correct, correct.
We're just offering them when this project is, is built. If you would like to move from this residence over there, priority would be given to them, am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. Then, once we move those, then, because it's going to take additional funding that, we're trying to get this funding, so get along, trying to get that funding. So, I, I just want us to be clear on that, that the people that want to stay there, like, we're two or three years off from even considering having to move those individuals because we have no plan or no finance for redoing those, am I correct?
Not at this time, that is correct.
Correct, so I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that. But, the soon as you open up your doors in this beautiful new facility, priority will be given to our residents if they so desire to move over there. And the other ones will remain until we come up with a plan to where they'll have to relocate. Is that correct?
That would be, that'd be close to being correct, yes.
What part is not correct?
Well, the, the, the hopes will be that we have a plan kind of in place, kind of going towards that, that way, there could be a smooth transition, and, and, because you don't want to have people out of the units and then fill them, because if you've got empty units, you don't want a position.
But we don't have that plan yet, do we?
Right, right, so that, that plan is not currently there. So, right now, the, the plan is to build these with the hopes that HUD will approve, because HUD's going to have to approve because that's their property. Um, we just manage it for HUD. Um, but, but the, the hopes would be that they would approve a, a, a new plan for those properties, and we want to work with the city on that, on what we can do to, to make a, a, a great, a great mark on the city, um, and see growth in the city. Um, but that is yet to come. So, right now, this is basically a development that we hope will, will be the facilitator to that, but HUD has not approved anything on that end, um, as of yet. So, there wouldn't be a situation where homes are left empty with, without, without a plan to, to basically do the existing, the, the existing properties. But, the hope is that this would just be kind of a, be, because anytime you're relocating families, you want to have a plan that's in place, already set, and this is, this is a, a blueprint for many other authorities where they basically were able to utilize this, and you're not really displacing families because they're less than, I mean, they're less than a mile or right around a mile from their existing location. So, while you are displacing them physically from their, from their house, you're still leaving them in community that they're, that they're used to. And that's, that's the hopes here.
So, we'll let Mayor Protem finish her question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify that, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Okay, so, so that, that, that did actually give me some clarity, um, on the number of people that will be relocated into that area, and when you say they'll have the opportunity, you'll open basically a portal, and whoever, I, I'm sure you have quite a waiting list as well. Whoever applies, you, you're not intending that, that, my concern is, is, is part of your argument has been these places are dilapidated, and they are, they really are, they need a lot of work.
Okay.
And the Jonesboro Housing Authority, the organization, and HUD need to put in those dollars to repair the existing facilities, especially if you're going to continue to try to place families there. In my mind, it was a relocation, so you could completely redo those or either take them down and put some.
Well, that's what I continually, I mean, I've got over fifteen emails of correspondence with council members. And, well, I'm just saying, I've got correspondence with council members where I've answered these questions.
Paul.
If you'll let me finish.
Okay.
So, so this, this paints, this shows me a different perspective in that way. Now, from what I understand in reading, um, and forgive me, because some of my stuff I got from the media, from Clayton News Daily, the Jonesboro Housing Authority owns the property. Presswic is going to do at least agreement with the Jonesboro Housing Authority, correct? To, to do the development?
Eventually, yes, they don't own it currently, but that's how it'll be structured.
Okay, so the Jonesboro Housing Authority, as a nonprofit, is exempt from property taxes. And for forty of those units, they're exempt. However, Presswic, with the other hundred and sixty units, will they be responsible for paying the property tax? And will it be at a discounted rate if so, or will it be at the rate that the council sets? I mean, that the city sets?
The entire property will be, uh, have tax abatement, except for any retail space.
So, there will be no property taxes paid period on any residential units in this, in this building?
Correct, correct.
So, it's a sixty million dollar development, and that would be three hundred and three thousand dollars that would be paid yearly in property taxes if this was not a nonprofit development, correct?
Sure, correct.
Okay, so, none of that money will come back to the city. So, we're, what, my point to you is, we're already, since we've already passed that this can be built.
Sure.
We're literally giving you three hundred and three thousand dollars every year that that development is sitting there, and it will only go up as taxes rise. So, we're already contributing to this project a lot of money on an annual basis that the city will never see. Additionally, two hundred and fifty, a quarter million dollars, even though even, let's say, two hundred and fifteen, just what, what you're asking for in kind, it's not in kind. Somebody's got to do the work. So, you're asking us to take residents' money, business owners' money, and put our city workers to work for free? For two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work, you're asking them to do for free? And I'm struggling with that.
Okay, and let me just say this, I, I don't want, I, I definitely don't, and at some point, I do want to stop it. I don't want this to be a personal attack against Jonesboro Housing Authority, nor, no, let me finish, nor Paul. And so, when you pose questions like, so you're asking us, it's a, it's an entity and a project. So, I'm, I'm speaking, so I, I just don't want it to come off that way. Um, there is a motion on the floor, it's been appropriately second. Um, I think we should let the vote carry out and then move forward with any discussion after that. Um, all in favor? Any opposition? There you go, so we didn't, didn't have to go through all of that. Thank you so much, Pa, I do want to take a point of personal privilege. Paul, Tammy, your entire staff, um, I appreciate the work that you all did, um, to get us to this point. I, I understand the value, but I also invest the time to understand the housing market, so don't be discouraged. Um, and Paul, I know it's hard, um, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can you clarify the nays? I have.
Let's call the vote. Councilman Billy Powell. Councilman, Council, Mayor Protem? We're calling the vote.
Up to Don.
Councilman Don Dixon. Mayor Soder. Um, in favor. Councilwoman Asia Miller. Councilman Bobby Lester. Councilman Alfred Dixon.
In favor.
Are we good on that? All right, next on the agenda.
All right, letter G. Counsel to consider approval of a transitional financial support service as recommended by Plant Moran to assist the finance department. Additionally, counsel to authorize payment for the invoice related to services that will be provided.
Counsel, um, we have not been able to resolve our issue with Tyler. We're working closely, um, with Ms. Munjan. I would just ask that we attend, um, entertain that in June, or, no, I'm sorry, July, or let's have a special call meeting. Yes.
Can I make a motion to table this item?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I don't think we have to table, do we have to table if there's no motion? But, go ahead, let's, for the cleanup, go ahead. Go ahead.
Want to make a motion to table this item for further discussion next month?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Counsel, I would ask, though, in case we need support or approval for, um, a project manager through ENCODE to work through this glitch, that we be available for a special call meeting between now and July, if they come up with being able to rectify the issue. Next item.
Counsel to discuss internal communication policy slash rules of procedures for elected officials.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, uh, Mayor, counsel, this is based off of last week's, uh, comments. I appreciate you all providing the rules of procedures for elected officials. Um, and I think we came to terms that we wanted to establish, um, just a shared interest or a shared communication policy, uh, that promotes transparency, um, within our communication. And that it will reflect or make it a requirement to where, uh, council members and staff, would respond to each other, um, within forty-eight hours.
Again, the current policy states that if you want to speak with counsel, you have to go through the city manager. May have council members, current policy as adopted in February of two thousand nineteen states that, um, elected officials are to correspond or make any request of staff through, um, the mayor and the city manager. So, um, some point earlier, I kind of waived that as the mayor and just asked that if they make a request to just simply copy me on there, um, just so I can be aware of the request. And so, now, I, we're not trying to change that, we're just requiring that they answer within forty-eight hours. But that is, that is dealt with in forty-eight hours, business hours?
Across, yeah, but across the board, both, both ways.
So, that counsel is required for forty-eight hours? All city staff are encouraged, I don't see that, though. So, all staff are encouraged to respond to inquiries from elected officials within forty-eight hours. And I don't want to put that on the staff because some of that may fall on the city manager or the mayor, but, um, I would just ask that we include a courtesy that all council respond to each other as well as the mayor within forty-eight hours. And actually, you all, because it's, it's a rules of procedure that was adopted, it would have to be approved, it would have to be amended via resolution as well. So, um, I'll take the inclusion that we want to include and provide it for the attorney so that we can have a resolution for it in July, creative. So, are you all okay with just adding that, um, all staff and council and elected officials are encouraged to respond to inquiries from one another within forty-eight business hours? Are y'all okay with that? So, we'll make that addition, and then we'll get that in the form of a resolution. Um, I'll entertain, I'm sorry, I guess we need a motion for that, too, but go ahead.
I just had a question for clarity. Um, council members may contact department heads directly, but must CC the city manager? And you're saying city manager and mayor, I don't know if you're, if it's because we don't have a city manager or once we have one, it's still both, that's one question. And then the second one says on any operational request, and I just want, like, an example or two of what operational request is.
Where you, where you reading it, are you reading on the first page?
Uh-huh, policy overview. On the agenda item summary page, it has a policy overview in there. Under summary and background purpose, and then policy.
Uh, under the bullets?
Uh-huh. The third bullet.
Councilman may contact department heads directly, but must CC the city manager on any operational request. And so, that, I would ask that at any time that council members contact department heads, the city manager and the mayor are copied on that. So, you can reach out, so the current policy says that you can't even reach out to them, you have to reach out to us. And I'm okay with you all reaching out directly to them, but copying the mayor and the city manager.
I think that's fair.
And what's operational request, or you just mean in general, any time we reach out to them, whether it's operational or not?
No, like, for example, uh, uh, if you want to put anything in email to them, I would request that we be copied on it. But if you're coming up here and you see Ms. Shandrella, I mean, Ms. Drewitt, and you ask her to, um, when is registration open for GMA, then that's fine. But if you're going to ask Candace to give you an update on how much money you have on your line item, I would just ask that you all put that in email, so one that holds me account, holds them accountable to making sure they respond back to you in forty-eight hours. And then, if Ms. Candace is out, or Ms. Candace is working on something, I could just respond back and say, maybe a little later. Or I can also delegate it to somebody else, because Shelby can also pull line items as well. Is everybody okay with that? So, I'll entertain a motion to create a resolution to the rules of procedure for elected officials that was, um, adopted sometime in two thousand nineteen to include a forty-eight hour response rule, not to include weekends for city staff and elected officials, as well as, um, well, I don't think the second one needs to be changed because it's, it's in there already. It's an existing resolution as such. All right, I entertain a motion. Yes, Councilman Powell?
And here we have, uh, travel expenses, and it says that, uh, council will have, uh, the same as we got right now. Would that be the budgeted amount of money for out-of-state and in-state travel?
Well, tell me what page you're on, Councilman Powell.
One ninety-four.
Uh-huh, travel expenses, the purpose of this regulation, so we have updated the new mileage rate, mileage rate per federal government, so that's been, um, that's been updated. But if we want to do a, a whole travel expense rehaul, then we need to do that at another time. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm, okay, right now, we have a budget, personal budgets.
Correct.
You do, I do, everybody does.
Okay.
Okay, when your money's gone. Okay. When your money's gone, it's gone.
Okay.
Okay? So this is not just saying that the city will pay for anything that's reasonable. If your money's gone, it's gone.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know why we need to be traveling out of state.
Well, I, I'm, I travel out of state.
I don't know why.
Well, because I go get, that month, that one point, that four point such and such million dollars that we were just approved from Congressman Scott took a trip out of state. Thank you, Shelby. So again, I'm, y'all can travel wherever y'all want to. The mayor is going to travel outside of state. Yeah, well, some of us went to Tampa, Councilman Dixon went. Some was just the desire to go out of state. A lot of the national grants that you all want us to write are national, and so we go to national conferences. But again, you, you determine your travel, how you want to travel, and I determine mine and anyone else's. All right?
We have a motion on the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Who seconded that one? I think Councilwoman Miller. All right, thank you so much. Next item.
Counsel to discuss city events and the city, city center calendar for June twenty twenty-five.
I think last week we were just requesting that the, um, the calendar be provided for us for June. And I think, um, and I believe Councilwoman Miller asked for a system for, to be, for it to be, the information just to be provided for us in a, on a rolling basis.
Okay.
All right, next. Letter J. Counsel to discuss reestablishing the Jonesboro Beautification Commission.
Oh, and Mayor and Counsel, um, really truly, I would just like to, um, reestablish the Jonesboro Beautification Program and, um, give, allow Ms. Cameron to begin setting the monthly meeting dates and soliciting participation from the community.
All right. Next.
All right.
Miss, excuse me. So do I need to make a motion for that?
What would the motion be?
To reestablish the, the Jonesboro Beautification Commission and allow Ms. Cameron.
I don't, I think we already have it, um, and she knows that that's one of her responsibilities. I think she's just trying to get caught up on some things and it was business license season, but her, it's on her agenda to get it done.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to reestablish. I mean, it's still existing. We just didn't have anybody in that role. But she knows, I think she's just kind of, she started full-time right at business season, um, as well as trying to catch up on some other things. But I think it is her desire to get started. If you would, send me an email and copy her and we can just get her most recent thoughts on it. I haven't checked in with her recently on it.
Gotcha, appreciate that.
Letter K. Counsel to consider approving an agreement between the City of Jonesboro, Georgia and Whites and Carrion Inc. in the amount of four thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars to repair the crack in the existing ring where the set screws secure them to the timepiece within the clock tower.
Mr. Heard, our Public Works Director, discussed this last week. This was something apparently in his installation four years ago. They were tightened too tight. Um, if it, if that bolt is to break, then it's going to ruin the eight thousand dollars that we just invested to get the clock fixed. So that is a, um, repair of urgency. Um, he had to put his hands on the, um, the man, he had to get with the manufacturer. So counsel, I would entertain a motion to please accept, um, this amount so that we can get that repaired done.
May I make a motion to approve the repairs as stated, um, for the clock in the amount of four thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars by White and Carrion Incorporated?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, counsel. Let's move, um, item L that was added is IG, IGA?
Yes, counsel to approve. Discuss and approve.
Counsel, we have an election coming up in November. We're also was made aware that there is a state election for our Public Service Commission. So the county will be running elections similar to times that we've had in the past. So we, um, the Clayton County Elections and Registration Department, um, will be working with a number of cities so that citizens don't have to go two places, um, to cast their vote for their municipal election as well as for the statewide election. So before you, you'll see the amount. Um, it's a total of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Rather than, if you don't want to vote on this, I just want to make sure we have all your questions answered. I know you just received this. Um, when do we have to have this information back?
Um, I'm waiting to hear back from her. I'm thinking in July, but I'll confirm.
Okay. So as of now, we probably can bring this back in Ju- July council meeting? Counsel, are there any questions that you would like to ask? Um, the only additional labor would be, and we're gonna, if you all, if it pleases the counsel, is that, um, Jonesboro will remain a site, um, for the election. Or not. Um, I think for us to run the election, what was the total again?
Um, I think it was the seven thousand.
No, no, for the city.
Um, I, I think it was twenty, was it twenty spent last year?
I think it was twenty-six thousand dollars.
And we budgeted twenty-seven thousand.
So one of the questions I would ask would be, does that include having, running our site here? For, as an early voting site? Any other questions that you'd like us to ask for clarity? Okay, that's fine. Ms. Drew, if you would just please send an email and copy, um, to Ms. Dozier and ask her, does this proposal for seven thousand dollars, I think it was eleven thousand, if we wanted to move it over here and have our site open for early registrat- early voting as well? So let's clarify that. Counsel, if we get that information before the July meeting, I'll make sure we send it to you.
Letter M. Um, discussion regarding Plant Moran.
I think we already had it. I didn't realize it was embedded in here, so we're fine. Good. Counsel, last week we spoke about hiring a part-time communication media position. I just gave the job description to Ms. Maria, so, um, and I don't think, Ms. Maria, like, literally at four o'clock, my apologies. Who gave me the job description? Did you, Ms. Chandrella?
Uh, Shelby.
Oh, Ms. Shelby created it. Okay, well, I just gave it to Ms., um, Ms. Worthington. So, um, I would ask that we share that via email, Ms. Maria, to the counsel and then we'll vote on it in July.
Okay. Next item is, um, economic development report.
No, we had two that we added. B was Juneteenth.
B, Juneteenth discussion, yes. Okay, so now we're going to do letter A, counsel to consider approval.
No, 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 we're going to do the Juneteenth discussion.
Oh, okay.
But that was B. This is, these are.
Letter B, under new business, is discussion regarding Juneteenth.
Um, I think the question, in question was, ignore the first page, um, Mayor Protem, I'll answer that question for you later. I think it's approval of invoices for Juneteenth. The first invoice is for two thousand eight hundred dollars. And that was the, um, Casper and the nine-one-one band, the live music for the Juneteenth celebration for two thousand eight hundred dollars. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Hold on for one second, Mayor.
Skip, skip pass, though. I am so sorry. We, we combined them together so I wouldn't have to be passing papers. But if you go all the way to the first, um, check request.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
This one was already approved, if you look at the box.
Okay, well, you just had a, you just had a sticky note on it. I know, but I think you had a, this one had a sticky note on it, too, from you today. Okay, so we're good on that one? All right, Hillman, um, that is the person that does our VIP setup here. We used them last year, last year. He charged us nothing for it. And so, um, this cost was split with the Downtown Development Authority. So our balance on that is eighteen hundred, one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Counsel, I would ask that you entertain a motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second is a motion.
All right, discussion.
Yes, so my question on this was, so this was amount was counted to. Did, did she say the DDA paid the deposits on this or did this amount that are in this budget?
No, no, this is the only amount that comes out, because the deposit, am I correct, came out of DDA budget. So this is the balance, so we split it. So they paid the deposit. There's a motion on the floor. It's been appropriately second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The next one is the Caribbean dancers. This is, the amount is nine seventy-five. There was no deposit given as the entire amount. We had them last year, I think, pretty close to this entire amount, and this is our Juneteenth entertainment. I entertain a motion to approve? Well, I thought, let's just approve. There a motion to approve? So I think the confusion is that there is a memo that authorizes a certain spending, but just to be clean, we're going to go ahead and get it approved. Can I get a second?
Second that motion.
Any discussion? Yes. Yes. So we had fifty thousand dollars in our entertain, in our event budget, and we split it down, pretty much down the middle. Twenty-five thousand for Fourth of July event and twenty-five thousand for, um, Juneteenth. And so I think, um, Andrew, if you bring those numbers up for me, I think Juneteenth total is twenty-three thousand and the Fourth of July total is about twenty-four thousand. So, so it would be no problem. Last year, we had a little problem with that, so I just figured we just split the pie in half. Um, the fireworks were more expensive for the Fourth of July, which enabled us to do some extra things. Can you just bring it here and I'll see?
Okay, so here is the Juneteenth, which is actually the Independence.
Yeah, so Independence total is twenty-five thousand and Juneteenth was, Andrew, where is the Juneteenth? Okay, he was going to help this. Well, one should be Juneteenth, is one Juneteenth, I don't know who they gave. So what we're passing out, um, for those that are here, is that the budget for the Juneteenth and the budget for the Fourth of July. So the Fourth of July budget is right now at twenty-five thousand one hundred and forty, and then the Juneteenth is, can I get a Juneteenth? The Juneteenth one is at twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the Caribbean dancers of Atlanta for nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much, counsel. The next one is Luminary Media Works, five thousand one hundred. Again, this is one that was split with DDA, am I correct? Yes. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
I'll, I'll set it, but I saw a question.
Did anybody make the motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Alfred Dixon. Yeah, I mean, it's been seconded by Mayor Protem? Okay, discussion. Yes, ma'am?
The, the fifty-one hundred, is that that amount stand split or is that half?
That's half.
So the total amount was, was ten-two?
Yeah, for ten-two for, for, um, Juneteenth.
And that's for Juneteenth?
Correct.
Okay, we, did we not already approve sound with a different company that they were supposed to, we kind of sound contracted?
Yeah, so that sound contract is being fulfilled through July third. We had one more date that we had to do with the sound contract, so we're using them on, for Fourth of July.
So I thought, I thought we approved it for specifically, we didn't approve it specifically for Juneteenth going forward. So that they gave us, it was two services, show business?
No, no, we had to do four. This contract was about, is it two years old? So across, because we shortened our, we would have fulfilled the contract last year, but we had to get five, um, performances. And the last one would be July third. So it's been kind of like slow. Yeah, so no, no, we're satisfying that July third, and then after that, then we can bid out for all of our sound moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's been appropriately second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, the next one, I think, um, Councilwoman, she wanted to know the total amount for the DJ and it was a thousand dollars. Um, and we're asking for a five hundred. I believe the DDA might have paid the deposit. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? All right, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Simpson, is that all of the, any outstanding invoices, Shelby, that you can think of? That should wrap it up. All right, thank you, counsel, so much. Um, the next item was a discussion about July third. I don't, not sure what we needed, um, Mayor Protem?
So, yes, my, my, really, I just wanted to give a, a good update. We've, we've been given a lot of really good information about what we're doing in Juneteenth. So I just wanted to give a good update of the progress that we're all for and see where we were at. But this, this piece of paper gives me a lot of information.
Anytime that you all want updates in the past events prior to me being mayor and even last year mayor, we never provided this to counsel. So these are readily available, so if you all at any given time want to see numbers for an event, I require every event, Shelby will tell you, and that after every event that there's a budget cleanup from the event that tells us total what was spent. And so if you want to go back and get those for any of the past events, you can, but I don't have any problem sharing it, just in the past it had never been asked of the prior administration. But if you all want them, and this is sufficient, we can give them to you. I can tell you that this is the exhaustive amount, so you all won't get another update for either one of these events. All right, that brings us to the economic development report. I mean, I'm sorry, was there any other Fourth of July?
No, we want to go to officially that important, with anything and see, and see what that progress was.
Okay, and when you. No, and I guess, if y'all be clear, like, progress, because y'all kind of sprung this up on us, I'm not sure what type of progress you all want. We have outstanding events. You all are more than welcome. We can add them to our planning meetings and then they can come to those. Councilman Dixon, did you have anything else?
I'm, I'm just appreciative for the information. I'm looking forward to a great Juneteenth event and a great Third of July, Fourth of July celebration.
All right, and again, kudos to our staff that'll be working each one of them on a holiday. We appreciate that. We appreciate y'all and all the pre-work. All right, now, economic development report?
Okay, greetings, Mayor, staff, people in the audience and those watching at home. Is anyone got any questions about my report?
I'm just, just curious to hear how the, um, the SCEI boot camp went.
Um, so I did the first one and second one. Um, I didn't do the third one because I wasn't available and I will be doing the next one. Um, I think it's very good to interact with different cities. SCEI is very aware of cities of certain sizes, so they will partner you with a city of a similar size to you in a different state. It's not like we would be partnered with somewhere like Houston, Texas or somewhere like that. Um, we were partnered with, um, a city in Louisiana that was roughly about the same size as ours that have similar issues, too, so they, they are very, very aware of that when they partner.
And just though, that's the Southern Cities Economic inclusion and, um, just to address Councilman Powell, that's a national initiative. And we learned about that at a national convention and in turn, we end up with a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. So when people say, you know, we don't need to travel, but again, we get this national opportunity, um, that I think we beat out a number of cities. And so we get fifteen thousand dollars on the planning phase and we'll get sixty thousand dollars on the second phase. But the technical assistance and the boot camp and the training that we get is, um, you really can't put a number on that. And, and again, some things just have to be dealt with at a national level.
Yes, that is true.
Has it been worthwhile for you?
Oh, absolutely. And I believe, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Cameron, but she was here and I'm sure she'd say the same thing. Because she engages in the homework that we do as well as the boot camp. We are actually given homework and then we have to report that homework back and upload it. So it's not just sitting on a Zoom call. It, it's so much more than that.
All right, thank you so much, Andrew.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we'll have report of city council. Councilman Billy Powell, do you have a report?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman, I mean, Mayor Protem?
Yes, ma'am. I just, I just want to take a moment to say Happy Father's Day to all the dads that'll get to enjoy that. Um, your council, many of your council are traveling to the GMA Conference Juneteenth, and I'm gonna ask the mayor later if maybe we can call in during, during the session, since I'll be on the road.
What session?
Um, well, see, I've got an eight fifteen class Friday morning, so I won't be able to be here.
What, what's going on Friday morning?
For Juneteenth. We have to leave.
So you want to, you want to call in for what?
Call in and just do a shout-out and enjoy the celebration.
Oh, at Juneteenth, on Thursday? Okay, I thought you said Friday morning. So when do y'all leave? Thursday morning or Friday morning?
I'll, with, with the rate I drive it, it'll be Thursday morning.
With Thursday morning?
Yeah.
Well, we are, we're actually going live too, so if you all, um, that's something that we can do. If you all want to do a Juneteenth greeting and record it, um, we're doing that with some of our sponsors, so get with, um, Andrew, we'd love to have that. But, um, I think it's supposed to be, the whole event is gonna be streamed live. Is that correct? Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. And I also wanted to just give a personal thank you to everyone, um, during our family's recent loss. I want to thank you for your thoughts and your prayers and your cards and, and everything, um, this past month. It's been hard, and I appreciate your patience, and I appreciate your caring. And I just want to say thank you to this community for caring about, about everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Don Dixon?
Just want to say thanks for everyone showing up. Drive safe home.
Councilwoman Miller?
Um, piggybacking off of Mayor Protem, Happy Father's Day, or Happy Early Father's Day. Um, also, I just want to thank, um, a few, all of our staff, of course, always, but here recently, um, Councilman Dixon and I were, uh, we opened a concession stand, the concession stand in the Jonesboro Elite Street Park. And there are a few members of staff that are really instrumental, and I really appreciate it, so of course Shelby, Ms. Maria, um, our public safety chief, um, Andrew, uh, we had another officer, uh, that was instrumental, instrumental as well. We missed him, but we appreciate him. Um, and so I just really want to say thank you and Ms. Candace. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who participated in that. I know this is something new. I know there are a lot of loose ends I need to be tied up, and you all are always there, and I appreciate that so much from the bottom of our hearts, um, from my heart at least. Um, so thank you so much for that, that's all.
Councilman Lester? Councilman Alfred Dixon?
Just, um, piggybacking off of what everyone said up here, thank you all, uh, for just continuing to show up, uh, speak out, you know, stay engaged, uh, within the community. It really matters, and I really appreciate you all. Um, thank you to our staff, uh, our fellow council members. Mayor, thank you as well, um, just for the, the commitment to community and ensuring that, um, our residents get, get what they need. Um, I appreciate our volunteers and our boards. Uh, we had the opportunity to attend a few of the DDA meetings, um, this past month, or the past two months, and our interns look forward to starting the walking audit, um, starting on the walking audit, um, tomorrow. So they'll be getting with you, Andrew, uh, just to see if there's any uh, type of, um, or any, any additional information that they would need to, uh, to carry that walking audit, uh, through. Um, so just, again, thank you all. Next Monday is the J Y C G meeting. Um, it is also the onboarding for the, for the upcoming class. Um, we have thirteen new applicants, and they are so eager to get started. Um, not only the kids are, but their parents are as well, and they're all being attendance next Monday, so please come on out, show your love and support, and, um, Happy Father's Day.
All right, my-
I'm sorry, Tran. Yes, Tran, thank you so much for that newsletter. It looks amazing. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Because it looks amazing, and, uh, I can't wait for it to be in our mailboxes, um, that's up, in a few.
Like, tomorrow, hopefully.
Tomorrow. Okay, good. It looks amazing, so thank you all so much for that.
All right, just a few announcements on my end. Um, go back to my notes, I don't miss anything. Um, just want to start off with a quote, um, out of the spirit of gratitude. Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Henry Ford. So I want to thank my council members, all of you all. Um, I can definitely feel the evolution of us working together, and so personally, I appreciate that. That makes my job as mayor a lot easier, and I hope it's fulfilling for you all as well, and I ask that we just continue to make this progress moving forward. Um, we will be working with Maria to make sure that you all get that events calendar, um, and we're gonna time it with the business license, so when you get the business license, I request that you'll get that as well. Um, again, thank you to Tran, um, Alfred, Councilman Dixon, Councilman Miller, and Mayor Protem for helping with that newsletter. It was a labor of love, as well as Andrew for being our major editor on that, and it should be in mailboxes by the end of this week. Um, counsel, you'll receive an email in regard to mileage rate hearings. We'll have to schedule some time to talk about that. Um, we met with the playground, so I know if you're out there in virtual land, you've been asking about that playground, um, so we met with the playground. I have a sample of the grass. Um, and we are hoping that at least by mid-July, we'll have that open. While we were, um, with the gentleman from the playground equipment, we found two additional pieces of playground that have to be replaced. Um, so we'll be at the mercy of those receiving, but know that we're working, and we're just asking you all to enjoy the playgrounds at Massengale and Battle Creek. Um, but kids are learning how to play in the open field, and so I'm happy about that. This week, I'll be attending the, um, Atlanta Regional Commission Housing Leadership Academy for our second session. You have already asked about the SCEI. I want to thank, um, Mr. Simpson, as well as Ms. Cameron, for their, um, support and their full engagement of that. It's been really exciting to see our staff to grow. As you know, we have our Juneteenth event, which promises to be a great event. Counsel, if any of you are gonna be there, if you are, any, any of you all have special guests, please let Shelby know, so that we make sure they get a parking pass for that as well. Um, on June seventeenth, I would ask that all council members be in attendance for our street renaming of White Line to Star Drive. We'll actually have Ms. Starr there, um, who lives at the end of the street. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. If you all recall, you all voted unanimously for us to make that name change some time ago, but just not getting the chance to plan that, and so I appreciate that as well. Uh, we'll move forward with our volunteers and being a city of volunteerism, and I'll be working on that. Other than that, I wanted to thank staff for the excellent effort. I think we by far have the best municipal staff, then I'm going, because I do travel nationally, I'm gonna say in the nation, because you all work hard, and I appreciate that. Um, that's all that I have, and we have no business for it. Um, well, anybody want to go into executive session? All right, well, we won't go into executive session. Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, you all have a good evening. Thank you all for joining us this evening.